Hi, welcome everybody. This is the Tom Sumner Program for the Internet. And joining me here in the studio, I'll do a couple of quick introductions. And we have a very special guest by phone that we'll start out with. But as always, to my far right, we have Flint's premier political pundit, Paul Rozicki.
Always good to be here.
And on my left, the founder of the Three Rs Group, president of that group, and a candidate for Flint's School Board, Leon Al-Alemin. And we have Jermaine, who's taking pictures from behind me here. But joining me, we're gonna have a very interesting conversation, one that I don't think we can have often enough or deeply enough. And that is about race relations. A lot of people are talking about it, but we're gonna explore whether they're asking the right questions and having the right conversations a little bit. And to kick things off, I was really amazed to learn that there's a Jim Crow Museum in the state of Michigan. I had not heard of it, Paul had.
I have seen the display a couple of times at Mott College when you had a traveling exhibit that you brought by.
But it made me curious, and I wanted to talk a little bit about that place. And also with its founder, who joins us now by phone. He is the Vice President for Diversity and Race Relations at Ferris State University in Big Rapids, and the founder and curator of the Jim Crow Museum, Dr. David Pilgrim. Doctor, welcome to the show.
Well, thank you for having me.
I'm gonna ask you a couple of Jim Crow Museum questions that you probably get asked all the time. Why is it important to keep some of these images alive?
A couple of things. One, we have about 11,000 objects. One of your guests mentioned having seen an exhibition. That's actually one of our traveling exhibitions, which probably has somewhere between 30 and 50 pieces. But if you could imagine 11,000 pieces, you know, that's quite a different display. In the Jim Crow Museum, you would find, you know, what some people might simply call "American History Pieces." You'd also find segregation memorabilia. You would find anti-black caricature pieces. You'd find some hard-to-look-at pieces. For example, the section that deals with violence. But you would also find sections that deal with African-American achievement despite that. You'd find a section on the Civil Rights Movement, for example. I have one of the ink pens that President Lyndon Baines Johnson used to sign the 1964 Civil Rights, yeah, Civil Rights Act. But to answer your question, we believe it's important to learn about all history. Unfortunately, the museum also has a section on modern pieces, so it's not just material from the past. In other words, these are not things that stayed in the past. But we find some of the same types of images and messages being reproduced in the present. So the reason we have the museum and the reason that I created it was so that there would be a safe space to talk intelligently and deeply about race, race relations and racism.
You know, I found it interesting that one of the comments from the frequently asked questions about the Jim Crow Museum was about the images that were offensive. And there are disclaimers and cautions, you know, sort of, you know, if you look at this, you might be offended by this. And there's a lot of talk going on around the country now in the wake of what happened outside of St. Louis and Ferguson. But at the same time, we're having what seems to some people like kind of a silly conversation about the Washington Redskins. Are these really kind of the same thing in some ways?
Well, I think that they're different points on a long continuum. Objects matter. Actually, you could make the argument that images and objects, that they both reflect and shape. So they reflect existing views, but they also shape future views. You know, a piece doesn't have to quote "be racist" to be in the museum, but it has to be a piece that allows us to talk about race, that actually helps that discussion. You know, we've had thousands of visitors. We've had people come from Australia using the museum as a template to build a similar facility that deals with aborigines. We've had Henry Louis Gates, the Harvard professor, come. And Henry Rollins just shot an episode for his History Channel show, The Ten Things You Don't Know About. We are an academic facility. In other words, we're not a shrine to racism. We believe in the triumph of dialogue. I mean, how could it be otherwise? We're educators. And if you're in an educational environment, the expectation is that you're gonna talk about, you know, for example, if you're talking about history, you're gonna talk about all of history, not just the happy history. And you're gonna talk about it in a way that's deeper than, hopefully, what you would in a bar.
Although I think some pretty good conversations go on in bars.
Sometimes that's true. I was gonna ask a question too. Has ever been an object that you found so offensive that you had second thoughts about displaying it? What I'm thinking about here is, I think, a display they had a few years ago, I believe, at the African-American History Museum in Detroit, the series of photographs on lynchings. When they made postcards of those things and so forth. Did you ever have any hesitation about displaying certain objects because they were so over-the-top or so offensive?
Well, first of all, I'm aware, I think that's the, what's it called? Without Sanctuary Exhibition that they had on lynching. We have some of those same postcards. We display enough of that material just to make the point that we're making. There's only been one piece that, and it was actually donated to the museum, that we, you know, and by "we" in this case, I mean, I kinda was the tiebreaker and decided that, no, we won't show this. We don't need to show this object in order to teach the lesson we're trying to teach. And that was a lynching souvenir, which was, there's no other way to say it. It was a, you know, a really small part of a person, you know, like, you know, like a part of, you know, maybe a 8-10-inch piece of skin or so. We don't need to show that to talk about lynching, to talk about the role of lynching, what precipitated it, what were the consequences of it, what was the context of it. We don't need to show that to do that. Most of the pieces in the museum are pieces that are much less offensive. And in a weird way, that means they produce better conversations. So if it's a piece that has the word "nigger" in it or some other racist slur, that kind of decreases the conversation. Because no matter where you are, most people just think, okay, that's bad. What else is there to talk about? But when you have pieces like a mammy image, which for some people represents a kind of nostalgic, and I don't mean it in a flippant way, but a kind of nostalgic time, reminisce, a memory of time spent with their family to someone else, it represents the vestiges of slavery and segregation. The value of the museum is that we put both those people in the same place so that they can talk, and more importantly, that they can listen. So for us, again, it's an academic facility. Obviously, you know, it's not academic in the sense of just pictures in a book. And people, when confronted with many of these objects, will have an emotional response. But our intent is to use the objects to facilitate intelligent discussions.
You know, there's so many things that come to mind that I'd love to discuss with you, maybe at a later date. And I appreciate you being available to weigh in a little bit at the top of this conversation we're gonna have in a couple of minutes. We're gonna go to the people here in the studio and get into some of this conversation. But I wanna ask you the big overall question that I've been scratching my head about for the last six or seven years. And that is, how we got from civil rights legislation in the 60s to electing a black president in 2008 without getting a better handle on racism?
Also, before you answer that, this is... Well, I would kinda push back a little bit with the question by saying that, you know, first of all, I'll preface it with this. I think we are now, as a nation, more egalitarian and more democratic than we've ever been. That does not mean that there still are not challenges and that race matters in a way that it probably still should not matter. But we are not the same nation that we were in the past. And I'm not using the election of President Obama singularly as evidence of that. I mean, I felt that way before that election. But to push back to your question a little bit, what I would say is, we have not had sustained, intelligent dialogue on a national level. But we have had many, many, many years of many people having intelligent discussions about race. So many of those discussions were invisible. And by that, I mean, they were small-group discussions. They were, you know, discussions in hallways, discussions at the corridors, in, you know, in our offices. They were, you know, they were discussions in college classrooms. So I think there has been a lot of dialogue. I don't think there's been always intelligent dialogue. But there's been, there's been a lot of dialogue. About Jim Crow, you know, we've now had, you know, 50 years or so. And actually, if you notice, we're celebrating all the, you know, 50th anniversary of the Voting Rights, and all the like. 50 is, in the scheme of the universe, is not very long. But in the history of the US, is a fairly large chunk of time. And I think that, you know, in that 50 years, you know, again, although there are challenges, there has been significant dialogue and there's been significant progress.
Well, Doctor, like I said, there are many more conversations or many more questions and aspects of this that I'd like to talk with you about. But one last question, and I'll let you go, and we'll get into our discussion here in the studio. But do you have a sense that there's a reluctance to really get inside this discussion? And who feels that more, blacks or whites?
Well, okay, that's really broad. I would, to the first part of your question, yes. I travel a lot, I speak to a lot of groups. And for many years now, I think there's been kind of a fatigue about race, almost a, you know, sad, maybe naive desire to get to a point where we no longer have to talk about it. And, you know, it's weird, because you wouldn't do that with issues related to men and women. I mean, you wouldn't wake up one day and say, okay, fine, we got that resolved. There's no need for us, a nation, to talk about men and women anymore. While the same thing is with race, it's like sex or gender identity or sexual orientation in a number of topics. I think that the trick is to find the image, I mean, the energy and the maturity as a nation to keep having those discussions and just try to find intelligent ways to do it, to get beyond the sort of partisan political sides of it. And actually, just sit, and if you allow me, I'll just tell you about one experience I had recently. I was at Western Michigan University, and one of my old colleagues was there, Khalid El-Hakim, one of my old students, actually, who's now a colleague. And he's created the Black History 101 Museum. And he had a few of his pieces with him. They're pieces very similar to what you would find in the Jim Crow Museum. And so I sat around with a class of undergraduate students at Western. I think they were art students. And we sat in a circle, and we had a very simple exercise. We would pass a piece around a bank, you know, that had a caricatured image or photograph or whatever. We had like five or six pieces. And then people would just answer some basic questions, which were, when you see this, what is it you see? And then, why do you say that? Now, that sounds very simple, and it was. But it gave the folk there an opportunity to listen. It was the deepest conversation I've been in about race, probably, in the last 20 years. And I remember thinking, as I was doing that, that if we could just carton off some space and have people put aside this, again, the partisan political stuff and some of the other, you know, some of the other baggage, including emotional baggage about race, and just sit and just say, you know, answer the question, what is it that I see? And have others listen, and not condemn, not crush, not beat each other up, but just listen. I think the more we do that as a nation, the more times we do it, and the better we do that, especially the listening part. Then we come closer to answering all the big things about race and some other issues.
David, thank you so much for spending this time and for returning my call on very short notice. Hopefully, we can get together and spend a little longer. I'd love to talk some more about some of these things.
Well, you're welcome to come to Big Rapids. It's a metropolitan area. It's the 1,500 miles north of Miami.
Well, fortunately, I'm here in Michigan, so it's not 1,500 miles from me. And I intend to come visit, and I hope to meet you in person. Thank you so much.
Well, you're welcome to do that.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
All right. Dr. David Pilgrim is the Vice President for Diversity and Race Relations at Ferris State University in Big Rapids, and the founder and curator of the Jim Crow Museum there. And again, thank you to him for joining us. But I also wanna welcome Leon Al-Alemin. He was dying to get in there, and I know, I know my friend Leon loves to talk. And I had to hold him off, because I wanted to get the professor in and out fairly quickly. But how did that feel? Were you aware that there was a museum like that in Michigan? I wasn't.
No, I actually wasn't. And that's what was sparking that, wanted to ask a question. I actually wanna know where that's located and get that information. I would love to go.
I can get that to you. It's in Big Rapids. And they have a Facebook page. You can check them out. They have a great website. And it's at Ferris University. So you could probably go to Ferris State, and, you know, there'd be a tab, you know, you can track them down. And I highly recommend it. It was an eye-opener for me. I stumbled across it sort of by accident.
And as I was saying, they have a traveling exhibition. They've had it a couple of years, a couple of times at Mott's. And I don't know about this year, if it's gonna be on the Mott campus or not. But with some regularity, they've brought their traveling exhibit to Mott College as well.
Who is more uncomfortable having the kind of intelligent discussion that Dr. Pilgrim was talking about when discussions about race come up? In your opinion, Leon, do you think it's whiteies like me? Or are black people?
I would say those, when we're looking at blacks, I would say those who have achieved some form of success, who are experiencing some success in the democratic process and things of that nature. I mean, we really don't too much have a middle class. But I'm gonna say, I'm gonna use the term for just the sake of speaking. Those who may have crossed to the middle class or above, they will be more uncomfortable talking about it. And I would think individuals like yourself, Tom, in regards to white people, I would think that individuals who are well-off as well will be more uncomfortable just because of the privileges in which one has attained or the success. And when you get to a level of success and you're comfortable in it, you kind of feel like you don't wanna go back and address certain issues. So I think it depends on what level you are.
That's interesting. The idea being that if you, if everything is going well for you, you don't really wanna know about bad stuff. Yeah, you don't wanna deal with those kinds of issues. But there's, I hear this, and this was interesting. I had lunch with a friend yesterday who represents a Hispanic organization. And she's always using the phrase "community" to talk about the Hispanic community. And I've heard black friends do this too, to talk about the black community. Have we, in the process of moving forward, just sort of fallen into separate but equal communities?
I think we've been there.
Well, that's what I'm getting at. Is that why we're not having the conversation or able to have the conversations in profound ways?
Exactly. I think individuals are already always comfortable with those who they can relate to a little better, or however you wanna put that. So, I mean, maybe media or so forth may have put that out there so we're like, we're all as one. But the reality is, we not have been all as one or all American. And you can look at it from an economical standpoint, an educational standpoint, and things of that nature, and go across the board. And statistics will prove that we already been segregated and separated. And we look at it more or less, our groups or our nationalities and things of that nature. I mean, to be politically correct, at times, individuals may get on camera and so forth and say, we're all American. But the reality is, when you see things, Trayvon Martin and Mike Brown and things of this nature, and I just was looking at a statistic before I came over here, between 2006 and 2012, there were at least two black males unarmed killed by white police officers, you know. And this is a statistic by police, this is police data. And so things of this nature continue just to prove even more the way how some individuals may see things the way I'm seeing it right now and will go with that level of thinking.
Paul Rozicki is a political science instructor at my community college. In the classes that you teach, do you notice something different over the years that you've been doing it? Is there, are there differences in the perception of the questions surrounding race and race relations generationally?
I think so. I think so. And I think my initial reaction to that question is that I think for younger African-Americans, I'm getting fewer questions than I used to. I mean, when I was talking to a class, let's say, in the 70s or 80s, and for those who grew up during the Civil Rights Revolution, there would be a lot of energy in it. I'm not getting quite the same kind of energy there in the last decade or two. Another difference that I notice is this, in terms of the reaction. When I'm talking about race, you know, civil rights, the Brown case, things of that nature, voting discrimination, the reaction I get depends on the audience. If I have a class where there's only, let's say, for example, one African-American student, and that does happen occasionally, the reaction, depending on their personality reactions, is kind of a cringing thing, oh gee, now they're all looking at me, they're talking about race. I almost hate to do that. On the other hand, if I have, this is much more common, you know, a half a dozen black students in the class, then the discussion really becomes very lively, because people kind of feed off each other. But when you're kind of all by yourself, I've seen that reaction a number of times. Gee, if this poor student out there, and everybody's looking at me, they're talking about race, and now I gotta say something that means something. But if there's a half a dozen people, then yeah, I get a very, very good discussion generally. But I have noticed a generational shift for those who kind of went through the Civil Rights Movement of the 60s and maybe the 70s compared to those who've grown up in the last, let's say, 20 or so years.
I was in a band once, and I'll just tell this quick story, and I wanna get back to Leon. But the, this band that I was in, every time, and it was an all-white band, every time a black couple or a group of black people would come in the room, the bandleader would call a song like "Respect", or "I Feel Good" by James Brown, you know, to show that we were cool, you know. And I always kind of hung my head when he did that. And it was, it was well-intentioned, but it was flaky at best and racist at worst. And the thing is, how often are efforts to reach out, how often did they themselves become unintended racist acts? And I'll give you one more example of that. When I was a young boy, there was a phrase that went around that white people would use to show how not racist they were. That became very offensive, and you know the one?
Some of my best friends are.
Some of my best friends are colored. And colored was the word of the day. And it was so funny, because it was well-intentioned by most of the people that I knew that were using it. But it came across as, what the hell does that mean?
Exactly. And that just only proves the uncomfortability that one was still having. You know, when you still gotta relate, when individuals will come around and say things of color or things of that nature that would, you know, not necessarily the proper thing to say, as you said, when you're banned, or things of that nature. If we're looking at each other as human beings and as equals or as friends, I know you, Paul, or I know you, Tom, and we have buildings, you know, regardless if you are European descent, I'm of African descent, or regardless. You know, if you're my friend and you're human being, I judge you off the contents of your character. I don't need to sponsor or edit my words when I'm around you, because you know me. So that just goes to show even more the uncomfortability that individuals were having doing those occasions.
Right, right. I'm glad you referenced Dr. King's speech, because another question that's been rolling around in my head is, you know, when Dr. King talked about the Promised Land, is that different for black people and white people? Do they have a different vision of what that is, the American dream, if you wanna call it that?
Well, you know, actually, that's gonna be different for every race or nationality in this country. Because our vision, our goals is different to a degree. You know, what you might see as the Promised Land, or what's success, or where you're trying to go might not necessarily be where I'm trying to go or what I might see as success, or maybe where I wanna go, you know.
Is that, is that part of the problem? Is that where programs have missed the mark by misjudging the finish line?
Actually, we, it doesn't have to be part of the problem, but it has become part of the problem. I mean, there's nothing wrong, that we used to make America so beautiful, you know, the markets, freedom of streets, freedom of religion, and things of this nature. And, but when certain individuals, corporations, or whatever you wanna call it, begin to propagate and use those entities and those differences for the benefit of certain races or certain entities, so to say, then it becomes a problem. When you force your values, your culture, and your way on everyone else, then yeah, it becomes a problem. But if you're just expressing who you are and where you wanna be, then so be it. There's nothing wrong with that. But don't hinder me or don't sidetrack me from where I'm trying to go. You know, there's plenty of room in this country, we call it America, for everyone to express themselves. That was what, at one point in time, everyone was racing to get over here. Everyone wanted to be American. Everyone wanted to come share in the American dream. But through the times, decades, and so forth, things done changed. You know, individuals of certain classes who just have all the resources and powers, and it's just more or less, you see it every day, forcing their way of life. You know, it's pretty much a rich and poor situation that we're living in now. And it's, if you're either on this side or on this side. And if you're on this side, you know, and your skin happens to be a different color of the majority who may be dominant in these resources and so forth, Caucasian or wherever nationality that may be, then this, where you get those issues and things of that nature. So it depends on how you wanna look at it.
Paul, is there a definition for the American dream?
I don't know. I mean, I suppose the simpler one is, you make money, you have a family, establish that. But I'm not sure there's a single one. One of the, one line...
The American dream has been sold more than cornflakes.
Yeah, I think that's true.
And, you know, I grew up, you know, believing in the American dream. You know, here I am, 57 years old, and I haven't got a clue what that is. You know, anybody can be president, okay, I buy that.
Everybody, I think we talk about making money, having a house, a picket fence, two kids. That's the American dream out of the 1950s, I guess. I'm not so sure it's true anymore. And I, and I think from what Leon is saying, maybe there is, maybe it's a far-broad definition of self-success. I mean, you can be extremely unhappy, I think, on a picket fence and two kids and all that.
But that's what I wonder about, because efforts to make a difference, you know, any kind of an initiative starts out with this premise that there should be, you know, achieved goals.
Right.
But the people who set out...
There's a thousand different goals for people, yeah.
But usually, a program will establish a particular goal. You know, if you can, whether it's homeownership.
Own, build more houses, pave more roads, whatever you say.
Yeah, there's, there's some end to that. John, I'm gonna grab John's attention, because I think one of our other guests has just arrived, so it might need a, some direction to get in here. But getting back on the point, you know, it occurs to me that people would... Um you know, it occurs to me that people with the best intentions. Start out with a program, but use their own vision of success. Where to try and get people to go and then can't figure out why people didn't go.
Absolutely, I totally agree.
And and so they end up.
Why people don't like it once they get there, cuz that's not what they wanted in the first place, I mean, I. Some of those anti-poverty programs of the of the sixties where you built all these huge towers. That were just disasters in Chicago especially, they were well engineered, but they were horrible social ideas. I can think of examples where with good intentions, I guess. Uh the government tried to move Indians into ranch houses and off their their traditional land.
You know, suit of clothes and the wagon. Drinking whiskey. You know, and there are and there are and there are other. Now, things that have now become comic, other images, you know, the the. Forty dollars and a mule comes to mind. Whiskey and uh uh western clothes, you know, for Indians or Native Americans.
Who who defines that, who really likes?
But that's but that's my point, you know, it's 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 been, you know, a country that was founded by. Primarily well-to-do white men. What's that?
Is that correct?
I'm talking about the founding documents, the group of people who sat around and drew up those documents. As the founding fathers, I'm not saying. Blacks or women or or people from other countries. Didn't contribute significantly to the evolution and to where we are now, but just. That that small group of white homeowners that sat down and drew up a document. And again, with all the best intentions and with some pretty incredible outcomes, but. The the point is that a lot of the. The driving force of this country until recent decades. Have been driven by. European descendants, primarily white people. And they've set as goals. The goals they held, that they thought had value, that they thought were important. And then expected people to. Get into these programs, reach those goals, and then everything would be fine, and they were stunned to find out that they weren't. And that's because we're not asking the questions we should be, which is what I wanted to get into today if we can.
That's a beautiful question, and that's something I would like to ask you two gentlemen, being Caucasian males. How do you feel about that? You know, I mean, I mean, of course, you may not be the the wealthy elite, but just as. I mean, just average Joe's like myself, you know, average Joe's work hardworking individuals, but. On the other side, you know, um European descent, how do you feel about that when European elite? You know, uh grafted a constitution and. Put a vision out here, in theory, it sounds good, you know, and in theory, it really sounds good, but most of those were slave owners. You know, so it's it's a big hypocrisy.
One of the great ironies of all time is Thomas Jefferson writing all men are created equal.
So I can't use, I can't even speak on something, see, these are the type of. Things that need to be pushed into our educational system, our kids and the conversation. We need to be, you know, courageous enough, whether you're white, black. Whatever your nationality is, if we wanna be serious about getting to some real solutions, you have to. Address it from a real standpoint, you have to put it really out there, regardless of whatever feed that you get.
But I've but I've actually gotten pushback, um not not in any serious kind of way, and this certainly isn't the kind of. Of things we were talking about with Dr. Pilgrim, images of lynchings and all that kind of thing, but I've been in in. Social situations where I've uh. Been talking with uh some black people, maybe that I didn't know very well. And I I I would bring something up and be almost rejected as, well, that's cultural. You know, and and pushed back, like you couldn't possibly understand, I don't know if I can understand or not. But I'd like to give it a shot and and you know, to be rejected in that way. Uh you know, and I I guess what I'm bringing up is, is there? A conscious, a a conscience, was there a? A a memo that went out or a text or something that said, you know, hey, keep it to yourself, brothers, you know, cuz, you know.
Well, I I was gonna, I was gonna touch really upon maybe there's some some class differences even within the black community, I mean. It strikes me that one other division we have to face big is the opportunities that are out there, and those run along the class lines, I mean frankly. Barack Obama's kids are gonna have a lot more opportunities than some some kids of a single mother living in the North End of Flint, whether they're black or white. And I think so the the class difference may make a difference, and and again, in terms of achieving the American dream. The opportunity to go to a Harvard, to go to Yale, to have the trust fund there. Gives you a lot of choices that somebody who's, like I say, who's a single mother living in the North End of Flint is never gonna be able to have probably. Black or white, so I think the class difference is cut in in a lot of ways. Across across many racial lines.
I would definitely agree, and that's why I say you really have rich and poor. You know, right now, I mean, when GM was here, we was kinda thriving, we had that middle class thing going. GM's been gone for some time now, so you're really looking at more or less as a rich and poor. You know, individual struggle, we can, we we can really agree to that. When you look at the high water rate deals, the protests that's coming up, things of that nature, so. I don't have to really go into too much about that, but something you said, Tom, that really sparked me was. I think back the first time I met you. When we came on your radio show with Andrea and so forth. And you said something in regards to um, you say other black people you had conversations with. And they looked at you like you possibly couldn't relate to that. The first time I met you, if I brought up some things, I I would have probably kinda had that prejudice or speculation about you, until I got to know you. I've been on your show several times, so having to know. See, this is, this is how we get comfortable, this is how we dialogue, it has to be more of that, you know what I mean?
But but as comfortable as as I am with you and 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 my friend Yusuf Boswell and and. And many other people I've known and musicians and I, we haven't even talked about, you know, the. He's at the door now, okay, alright, John keeps running up there looking. Oh, right, Rodney, alright, anyway, um but but I I um. Still, we'll run into situations and and this uh. And and this can be good for the kind of conversation that that we're having, but I'll go into a convenience store and there'll be. Four or five black people in the store and uh, thanks Jimmy. And then all of a sudden, I'll get uncomfortable, and I don't, you know, it's 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 not that I wanna have. A a preconceived notion or a an inherent fear. But yet. Urban life dictates that there are certain things, you know, that you be wary of, you know, and and that that fight or flight thing kicks in and. And and I know I'm giving off a, oh, I better lock my doors vibe, and and I don't mean that. You you know what I'm saying, but here's here's where the conversation. Where the where the the wheels leave the road in a lot of conversations about race. Is it becomes an opportunity to be critical. Of people's behaviors and where I wanna try to to delve if we can. Is explore what are the right questions? You know, so that like these these programs that start up, whether it's uh. You know, Child Protective Services or or uh. You know, the the people that give out the bridge cards or or whoever. Whatever agency, whatever organization, maybe it's a five oh one C three or something, whatever these people are doing. What is it they should be doing differently to make programs work? Now, you know, you're running for school board, you know, it's a, you know, it's a political year, it's a campaign year. And and there are all kinds of people uh. You know, one of the, one of the constant refrains is we've gotta, we've gotta cut spending on entitlements and. You know, we gotta quit calling them entitlements and, you know, we've gotta come up with these programs where it's welfare to work and there's all this kind of rhetoric going on. What is it that these programs should be asking so that they can? Orient the programs to be successful, or are programs even necessary?
Well, definitely. Some of those programs could be beneficial if they're being implemented properly. And the right individuals who are uh implementing are sincere about really helping those individuals, those programs are targeted to. But I think that as time moved past, individuals have learned how to manipulate those programs.
I was gonna say, are they simply bad programs or are they badly administered, are they decent ideas but badly administered?
That's a good word, badly administered, I would say a lot of those programs are badly administered, definitely, and something else you said too, um Tom, in regards to. You said, um, if you would go to a corner store and you see a group of black kids, you will get a little uncomfortable. Even myself, at these times right now, I get a little uncomfortable, though I may still go in there, and I'm just.
And and I and I and and I try to put out a vibe that's like, this is all good and normal. But I know I'm uptight.
There's that famous quote from Jesse Jackson, remember that quote, Jesse Jackson's talked about that very same issue, one time he was walking down the street. In DC at midnight or two in the morning, and all of a sudden. Couple of black teenagers were coming toward him, he got kinda nervous, and this is Jesse Jackson saying this stuff, so it is, yeah.
But even the same, I would do the same, I'm over here on the east side, and it's 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 a mixed culture. I I pretty much everywhere, I know people everywhere in the city, I've been here thirty four years. And even when I'm in, you know. When I see the individual with the tattoos and the earrings. And 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 the different hair colors, you know, I'm a little, I don't know, I don't know, is this guy, is he the guy who's gonna put on that jacket and? That shut up the classroom, you know. You can, you can go both ways. I'm not just saying that to to like, you know, um, to just to really to the audience. You know, it it doesn't really matter necessarily all the time, the area. Cuz it could, because you got danger in every area or things that make you uncomfortable. You know, I mean, I think we have to, as men and women, regardless of your color or race. You have to really step up and be courageous enough, if you choose to go in whatever area to get a, go to the grocery store. If you chose to go there, then you man up or you warming up and you go in that store with the intention of, I'm going here to get what I can and get and I'm coming back out. When you start looking at things a little more like, until something happens, if it does happen to you. Sometimes we can allow that that prejudice to already be subconsciously getting into our brain. Or from media and radio and things of this nature, that we don't probably heard of, so we already have an expectation when we go to certain areas. You know what I mean, so we already have those expectations, we gotta kill that, because there's individuals who get millions off. That type of propaganda that they do. Media, internet, or wherever it may be, so when you come into those.
We know there are professional hate baiters, you you know, they're out there.
You know, I'm thinking here, the old, when we watch eleven o'clock news, the old line is, if it bleeds, it leads. I mean, how many times do you watch eleven o'clock news and the first half dozen stories are, oh, there's another shooting in the north end, there's a mugging here, this, I mean. Yeah, that's a reality, but if you watch, if you get all your news from 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 the half an hour eleven o'clock news, you get a very distorted view of reality.
And something, you know, it's something recent that just happened in the news, I'll give you a prime example. The situation with Ray Rice and domestic violence, totally disagree, you should never did what he done. If that's what how it went down, never. But even worse is when the young man Mike Brown, Trayvon Martin. And and if I ain't mistaken, I'm gonna bring, I can bring the papers to you another day, Tom, it was like twenty other individuals from California. Same situation where the police killed these individuals unarmed and things of this nature. That should never trump the attention. Of individuals of what's going on in this country, that's 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 murder, that's flat out murder. Now, they took Ray Rice, an athlete, and you crucifying it, and it should be, I'm not saying that that he was right for what he was doing. That was totally wrong, I'm against that, my mom, I I grew up as a child watching my mother go through the same thing, so I'm totally against it. But I sit there and watch how propaganda comes through the media like that. They would blow up more of the the Ray Rice issue, more than this cop who's yet to be arrested. For killing a young black male. It's something wrong with that, and then I brought you another, this was right here in Flint. I didn't even know about this, we fell asleep on it, a same similar situation, we had the state police come in. This young man, I know his um stepfather, and I met his mother, upon, I'm passing off flyers doing my school war thing. And she seen my flyer and she says she was the, he was the gentleman that um my husband's talking about. And I was like, oh, wow, this is the young man, I I supposed to met this young man. And we was gonna, I was trying to try to mentor, he just come home from prison. I don't wanna go too much into the details of this story. Without their permission, but. Things like that get kinda pushed to the side, to kinda like get the attention off what's really going on, you know what I mean? You have Ray Rice's wife, she obviously, whatever the reason may be, and and people who look at it from both ends may say, well, that's just from. Years of highly psychological, or whatever you wanna look, she's still with him because she's scared or whatever, she's still with him. Then that she's still with him. But yeah, we just had another outpour, another riot. In St. Louis on that Mike Brown issue, but yet, the media is kinda like slowly trying to get you away from. And this is by design, because that cop has yet to be arrested, but let it be the opposite sex.
Do you think it's? Do you think it's by design or is it cultural ADD?
It's by design. Yes, sir, it's too many years done went by, you know, I'm I'm not that old, Tom, like y'all was just laughing, I'm not that old. You know, um as Paul was mentioning, you know, when he even his class, and the things that he's teaching. When it was like the sixty seventies, you had the uproar, you had the youth and everybody into it, civil rights, all that thing, theme going. You know, and um so I had an opportunity to kinda grow from that, learn from that, and to deal with what we're dealing with right now. It's by design, you know, history just repeats itself, but those who really study history have mastered. The loopholes, and this is what you get, they master how to get through those loopholes. You know, because back then, we'd be, we'd be in the streets tearing it up. You know, back then, that's how um. Serious and and consciously aware everyone were, not just some. Compared to now, you have a dis um, a disconnection, so to say, between our elders and our youth. On certain matters, and that's also by design, and some people like keeping it that way. Because if you look at any movement back then, it was always the youth that got on those front lines. With the Dr. Mark Luther Kings, the Malcolm X, Nelson Mandela's and so forth, you can do the history on it, it was those youth and. Individuals who study that. They know this.
But but let's talk about the uh about role models and the importance of role models because. It 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 seems to me that there's. There obviously, and I and I, when I. I've I found a cartoon on uh Facebook that I use to post and and promote that we were gonna be having this discussion today. And uh it shows two people talking and one is saying that um. Race relations have come a long way, the other one is saying race relations have a long way to go, and. I I I thought that was uh. Pretty important point to make, we have come a long way, you know, you're running for uh school board. We have another, a a number of black people in elected and in uh leadership positions. Are they serving as role models, are they are they looked at as role models? Or are they looked at as sellouts?
Well, from my standpoint, if 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 we're gonna look at, we we'll just look at the black leadership.
Oh, we're gonna need a chair for Tim.
You know, I deal, you know, um Tim's in here and he can get in here in a second, um. We deal with a lot of the youth, those at risk, individuals and things of that nature that you may term, whatever term you may term. And I talked to him and I asked him.
Tell you what, we're gonna be taking a break here in a few minutes, we'll bring you in in a second. It's alright, John, we we're gonna bring him in in the second hour. It's alright, John, we, we're gonna bring him in in the second hour.
And we asked that question, so to, to that youth, that population, we like to call forgotten population, they will say. About the black leadership and in, and to a degree even myself, are puppies, paid leadership. There's a lot of paid leadership in front of African Americans in this country to pacify us, from keep us from. Achieving or advancing as a group. It's okay for certain sections, certain individuals.
Alright, now, here's, here's where the, uh, you, you know, the, the political talk show host kicks in and says, when you get elected to the school board then. No longer be connected, are you gonna be part of the conspiracy, uh?
Tom, you've been knowing me probably what, over a year now?
But, but I'm making a bigger point. Because we're friends and I can do that, I can.
Does anybody go through that transformation, if you start out as a man of the people, you get elected, then after a couple of years, are you, do you lose that contact?
Some, some individuals do, but here's the thing with me, I don't even consider myself a politician, I'm a principal leader.
Before I fear, well, you're never a politician till you've been elected.
Or anything, no, this, this, if, I'm telling you, any listener, listener right now, this is what you getting when you elect Leon El Alamin for any position. It does not change, I stand on my morals and my principles, if it is against any human being. White, black, Asian, whatever it may be, if it's unjust and it goes against what I understand from the Bible, from the Quran. To be just lost towards God, I will not agree with you, I'm not for sale, I'm not gonna agree with it. If it's gonna, if it will destroy the progress we have in an educational system. City council, whatever the situation may be. I, I fear God more than I fear anything on this earth. So don't elect me if you looking for somebody who's gonna get paid and bought and dancing scenes of the tomb, because that ain't gonna happen, I'm telling you now. But if you want somebody who won't stand up and say, look, I don't know, that's not right, this ain't what the people over here saying. A couple of y'all over here may enjoy it, but the majority, what about these individuals who don't have a voice, that's me. I'm for everybody, you know what I mean, so when you elect me, that's what you get, it's just a title, at the end of the day, I'm a human being.
What, what do you think is the bigger threat to racial harmony, um, pigmentation or piggy banks?
Individuals are more worried about their money and how they get it than there is anything else. If, 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 if right now, if it was me. Say for instance, the, the situation in St. Louis was right here in Flint, you know what I'd do, we should do it anyway, just to prove a point, and I'll prove it to you. Economic shutdown, quit spending your money with individuals who don't value your life or support the communities and things that you come into.
You've been reading Malcolm X, haven't you?
That's my man, him, Nelson Mandela, uh, Tim Wise, and he's a Caucasian, and and go look him up. And he, and, and I really respect that man, I respect you, Tom, and other individuals, it's not just Malcolm and them, but though, that's one of the books.
But, but we got, but we gotta talk about who people can look up to, because I don't think. I, I think there's rampant lack of respect for authority in the black community. I think there are a great many white people who are starting to lose respect for authority in huge numbers. And I, and I wonder if, if that trend. Is the reason we're seeing militarization of local police departments. You know, seeing the tanks roll in and the M sixteen's and, you know, some of the things, you know, they're, they're wrestling about that in Ferguson now, because they've realized that. Wheeling in. Is inflaming.
More trouble than it's solved. In fact, the, the programs now, we're uncovering how many, how many school districts, I just heard on the radio coming in here this afternoon. How many school districts have got grenade launchers that they receive from this particular military program and armored vehicles, these are, these are not. Inner city ghettos, these are schools that were, where they've got these armored vehicles of one kind or another. So, so, yeah, those, that's, that's another issue altogether about how we, we formulate the police and and arm them and. Probably turning them into a military force does more harm than good for these kinda situations.
Well, I know it's, uh. This is a huge. And and I wanna, and I, I wanna continue this, we have another hour to go, hopefully, we have another special guest calling in during the, the second hour, we'll see if that. Takes place, but in the meantime, there are a number of other things that I wanna get into, um, thanks again, uh. To Dr. David Pilgrim from, uh, Fair State University and the Jim Crow Museum there, uh, for joining us for the first part of the conversation. Also to, uh, Leon El Alamin from Three R's, who's also a candidate for the, uh, Flint Community School Board. And, uh, and also, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna add into the conversation, uh. Tim from Three R's, who's, uh, gonna be joining us in just a couple of minutes, but we are gonna take a, uh. Oh, probably four or five minute break and then we'll do, uh, hour two, but I also wanna acknowledge, uh, Flint's premier political pundit.
Always good to be here, every Tuesday.
Paul Rosicky from, uh, my community college, and also Jim Wilson, or John Wilson, rather, in, uh, Master Control. Here at FlintTalkRadio.com, we're here every Tuesday with the Tom Sumner Program for the Internet, not always as heavy a discussion as we're having. And and there are so many political things that we. Snyder's doing his, uh, town hall meetings. Ten of those scheduled, uh, hoping to get people who are undecided to show up. He doesn't want the people that support him and he doesn't want the people who don't support him, he wants undecideds. Uh, number of other things, uh, Detroit's, uh.
Detroit's coming out of bankruptcy. Major proposals coming down Flint, we just had a here, a, a forum last night on these six proposals for the city of Flint. Be a couple of those coming up in next few weeks as well, one at the library, one at.
And and we're gonna get into a bunch of that.
Next couple of weeks.
Also, uh. I, I, I think next week's show's gonna be themed, how about them apples? Because it's, it's apple season in Michigan, we've had a bumper crop, and I also have an opportunity, uh, to talk to, um. Uh, one of the leading foodies from a national magazine. We'll have that conversation with us.
Thought you were gonna bring Charlie Miller in here.
Anyway, uh, we are gonna take a short break, we'll be back with the, uh, second hour of the Tom Sumner Program for the Internet. Here on FlintTalkRadio.com, so, uh, you know, I guess go look at, uh, pictures of, um, cute little kittens. Join us for the second half coming up in about five minutes or so.